Board block, we're here for the data meeting.
It's on.
And I'll turn it over to our chief academic officer, Mr. Jimmy Brin.
Hey, Mr. Wilson, I'll ask Dr. Jones to join me if you don't mind. Is this security? No, I'm just kidding. Obviously, Dr. Jones, everything in our role, we do pretty much hand in hand. So but definitely when it comes to assessment and data, Dr. Jones takes a huge role in making sure the assessments are quality and then making sure things are carried out effectively so that when we can present data, it's accurate data, and she does a fabulous job with that. So I appreciate that. I know, Mr. Hawkins, you wanted to kind of give us a brief overview?
Yeah, and we're certainly excited to be able to kind of share with you some data this evening. I think it's a pretty wide range of things that we're going to take a look at. Obviously, if there are things at the end that you'd still like to see or still have questions about, we'll certainly take those questions. We may not be able to answer them all tonight, and that's part of what data does. It may answer one question, lead to two or three others. And so we want to be able to try to do that. One of the things that was mentioned in my goals was to look at our historical performance over time and kind of identify what it is that we are trying to do well, or what have we done well? What are some things maybe that we changed? And obviously, our data only goes back to, I think, thirteen, fourteen. That was our access to the school report card data. And so really, if you look at it over a six-year period, what our focus has been, really has been on two particular systems. One is the Professional Learning Community system, and the other one is MTSS, which is a multi-tiered system of supports. And our belief, but those are all very much research-based. They are proven to gain results. And so our focus has been to stay true to those and to continue to improve each year. If you've ever read Jim Collins' book, Good to Great, he talks about the hedgehog principle. And the hedgehog does one thing, but he does it really, really well. And he always is able to survive because of what he does.
What does he do?
He gets involved. He gets in a ball, and that's his mode of protection. But he doesn't try a lot of other things. He does that one thing, and he does it really, really well. And so our goal and our focus has been to be very intentional about professional learning communities, which focuses on teachers, and putting our experts around the table to answer four questions. What do we want students to learn? How will we know if they learned it? What will we do if they don't? And what will we do if they already know it? And so by putting our teachers in control of that process and having them focus in on answering those four questions and doing that extremely well, we believe will give us positive results for our kids. And then the other system is MTSS, and that focuses on our kids, not only on the instructional side, but also on the behavior side through our PBIS system. And do we have quality tier-one instruction for our students? And then do we have a layer of support in each of those areas to help them be successful? So is our tier-one instruction, is it working? Are we reaching eighty percent of our kids? And then if those that we're not reaching, what do we have as far as tier-two? And how do we help those kids then with just a little extra support? And then we're going to have some tier-three students that need that additional support on top of the other support to help them be successful. And so again, that has been our focus. We don't chase shiny things. We believe in doing what is very research-based, what is very sound. And so that has been our focus over the last six years in terms of how do we just continue to get better at what we do? Collins also wrote another little follow-up to his Good to Great book, and it was called Turning the Flywheel. And turning the flywheel means you continue to have that focus on a couple of things, and you just keep getting better and better and better. And you generate momentum then, which turns the flywheel. And so that's what we are trying to do here in Woodford County.
What's an example of a shiny thing that we don't chase?
You may hear some school districts that are doing nothing but project-based learning. And they think you can teach everything through projects. And we believe that PPL is very necessary, but it should be balanced. There should be some foundational core instruction that takes place in every area. But the projects may be areas where you can apply what you've already learned. And so that would be one that I would say comes to mind that is, and I don't mean that it's not a good thing, but is that if it's not balanced, then it can be counterproductive to what you're trying to do. And again, that's where your professional learning communities come into play to say, okay, how can we assess what it is that we're teaching? It might be through a project. It might be through a paper pencil test. It might be through some other mechanism. But that's what the PLCs then can do.
Yeah, I would.
Technology is a shiny thing. I mean, we've been very, we were so proud when we were the first one to one, but you know, we need to adjust our thinking about that.
We use inappropriately. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Just like project-based learning.
Like the idea, right.
More is not always better.
Yeah.
But it's definitely a shiny thing that you can be trapped by, I think.
I would agree with that.
And sometimes I think too, if you change focus every year, this year, teachers were all doing their pink. Next year, throw away your pink, we're all wearing blue. Next year, throw away your blue, it's all red. That can really cause, I think, the district to suffer, and students and teachers and morale and everything to suffer, so.
And you will see on probably one of the first two or three slides, our big rocks. And they really haven't changed. Because again, we want to continue to get better at what we do, at that core foundation.
For purposes of helping to understand, we're going to, how far back are we going to go with this data?
Some of it will be back through 2013, 14, but a lot of it's going to be very recent.
And we can, yeah, and obviously, you get over, Bob, can you get me on the right?
Jimmy, Mr. Brin, when did we start with the current books going home and things like that?
That would be before me.
The ten?
Started by ten.
Eleven. Two thousand eleven. Okay. Yeah. And just to echo what Mr. Hawkins is speaking of and answer some of your questions there, I think I was reading something this weekend, Doug Limold is uncommon schools. He's networked in the Northeast, that he's had amazing success with very difficult populations. And one of the things he emphasizes is that, he was writing this weekend about, you know, what's, in all of the innovation, let's not forget that one of the most effective pieces of innovation is really solid, knowledge-based instruction in every single classroom. That in itself would be an innovative practice, right? And I've said, you know, when I was in Fayette County, working with a whole bunch of different schools, and some that sometimes would try to go too far, I said, let's not forget the most innovative practice would be high-quality instruction in every single classroom, every single day. That's rarely been done, right? Let's not forget that. Like, let's not forget that would maybe be the most innovative thing if somebody could actually make sure that happens. And that's where we try to ground, like, let's do that first, right? Let's do that first and then build from there, so.
Okay, Jimmy, it's all yours.
Try.
Sure.
Did you click on the right?
It's all right.
All right, now I'm rocking. Okay. As I shared with you all, and I apologize, I shared with you a blank document today, and I didn't explain what it was. Like, in my head, it made perfect sense. I was like, okay. What I shared it for you was so that as we generate questions, we can just record those questions on that sheet, and then we can kind of just report back in that sheet. So it is intentionally blank right now. It made sense to me at the time. But we will just note whatever questions that you have and make sure that we report back right in that live document as we get data. Whenever we talk about data with principals, we always use this quote, I use it at data meetings here with the board too, is that, you know, data's purpose is to answer questions or to ask additional questions, right? And so what I, as we go through the data today, I think it's, we don't want to ever let a single piece of data tell a story, whether good or bad, right? I don't want a single piece of data for us to say, oh, look at that, that clearly shows blank. Nor does a negative piece of data say, that clearly shows, right? Like, it should ask a question, right? So if you see the middle school has had outstanding achievement over the last five years, so should we say without a doubt, everything the middle school does is right, everything in the world? We think the middle school is a really great school, but are there other questions to be asked? Sure. What leads to that gains? Like, what leads to those? And so I just always preface the review of data is that it is intended to generate questions or answer questions, not give, always give definites, right? And so I just want to, I think that's important when we look at data. Last kind of piece that I will, then I'll let the data talk more than we talk, is these are our big rocks for this year. We say to put our big rocks in first, professional learning communities. We really emphasize quality assessment practices with our schools this year around professional learning communities. When we talk about project-based learning, we believe project-based learning is appropriate in schools when it's around how do we get students to show mastery of a standard, right? If students are supposed to be making scale drawings as their standard, that's an appropriate place to maybe build a tiny house, right? What we feel is inappropriate at times in chasing shiny things is if we say, wouldn't it be cool if we built tiny houses? Now let's find the standards that go with that, right? And that's kind of the backwards way to do things. So we say, hey, there's really cool shiny project-based learning pieces, but they come from looking at your standard and being creative about how students can show that. Rewrite and Discuss continues to be a major structure in all our classrooms. And we have worked a lot on team structures for success. How do we make sure teachers are at the table around decision-making when we work within a school? We think teachers, the people closest to the, close to the action always need to be on the decisions, right? And really making sure we're intentional about the team structures we put in place in schools, and how we monitor those teams, and how we make sure those teams work effectively when it comes to decision-making has been a big rock. So when we talk about structures for success, last piece, and then I'll, we'll get down and dirty into the data, is one of the things that the data overall kind of showed us from last year was that we are very intentional about monitoring the inputs of data, right? And I say, when we're doing things well, when I was in Indianapolis presenting on for just a couple of weeks ago, was that we really feel strongly that we have identified the appropriate inputs for schools. So we feel like we know the right things to monitor, that Elliott Walks being an example. We have eleven foundations that we ask principals to have in place at every single school, that I meet with them two or three times and share with Mr. Hawkins that specific feedback for when he meets with them. Around, these are the structures we feel like every school in our district has to have in place. And what we feel is powerful about that is when schools are performing well on those inputs, the data is matching those directly, right? So when a school does well on the inputs we're monitoring, we know what the data is going to do. Highlighted this specific year by the middle school in Northside, they have had systemic growth the last three-plus years. And that systemic growth, we expected to see, because when we looked at their data from the year that we monitor as the year goes on, map testing just being one small piece of that, when we monitor what we expect classroom environments to have in place, when we monitored what team structure should you have in place, what should PBIS look like, when we monitored those structures during the year, they were very positive. So the fact that their data comes out very positive on the backend is encouraging to us that we know the appropriate ways to support schools and to support classrooms, so.
Jimmy, you said that those two schools have sustained growth over the last three years. What about the other four?
Good question. The high school has had steady growth. It hasn't been as large as the middle school and Northside has had. Southside has held, and again, it depends which data you're looking at, so we're all, I assume it's questions about state accountability, but.
Make it the same data that you talked about when you were talking about.
Okay, that's state accountability. Yeah, fair enough. Yeah, totally fair. State accountability, which is the most public data. You know, Southside has held steady. Simmons has, steady to a little down, right? It's turned it down to steady. No, no, a good way to, it's not a sharp decline. Simmons has made steady progress, not as significant as the middle school or Northside, which I just highlighted, but it's steady progress. And Huntertown over the last few years has not made the progress that we would expect to see.
What about, is steady progress progress at all?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah. I mean, I think absolutely. I think you.
And we had that detail.
Good, all right.
Just to clarify there, you kind of talked about Simmons and Southside.
Southside is a steady, a little bit of decline.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, if I were to do my hands, Southside's a steady, a little bit of a decline, Simmons is a.
I'm very usual. To be fair, what you said about data really does, is significant. So if you're at the ninety-nine percentile, you might not make huge leaps and bounds and get to the hundred percentile. If you're at the fifty percentile and you make leaps and bounds to the seventy, if that's a great gain. So I think it is important how you preface data. You have to actually look at it and be able to compare apples to apples, you know.
That's the hard piece, right, is the apples to apples. And that's where this educational data gets very difficult, right? Because it's hard to compare apples to apples, right? Like, you know, we'll show some data that kind of shows where things are always changing. We only can really go back to thirteen, fourteen, for example, on assessments, because the assessment changed before that. So it's hard to, you can't compare one test to another test, right? That's not, you're not able to do that. So, and we also are concerned with the new testing coming out, that you're really probably reaching a point with this current trend where we'll see how this year actually pans out coming the end of the year, but that's about as far as we're probably going to be able to.
Next year's going to be a whole new testing.
And it's going to kind of start over a trend, in terms of a trend.
How long have we been using math? At least, I would say.
Way before me.
Eight years, at least, maybe seven.
Were you there some offense?
This is my sixth year. Manny was in third or fourth grade.
I hate her math.
So I know that's an issue with high school, but that is a steady test outside of the state accountability test, that we put a lot of credence on, so can't we use that over a number of years?
And that would be the same for all of the schools?
They all use math except the high school.
Yeah.
They re-normed that test, two thousand fifteen?
There are new norms in fifteen, so you can't, their percentiles wouldn't.
Be the same.
Yeah. So again, it's what you look at at that test. So like, you could look at RIT scores, which is that that score hasn't really changed. So you could look at RIT. You couldn't look at percentiles past before fifteen to after fifteen. And then also, they re-normed that, they re-normed the proficiency target, like you say, proficiency on that. They re-normed that every year, so that is.
Right, but even though they re-norm the proficiency, other than that one time, the percent's the same.
So.
I mean, as far as like sixty percent.
So it's not a true live percentile. Like, that's a bit of a, it's a bit of a misnomer, because they set, when they norm, they set the percentiles. They say this RIT score, like, I can give you a chart and tell you exactly what a kid's RIT score will give them a certain percentile. If it was live normed every test, that number would adjust. It doesn't, that's not actually how they do it.
So how do you measure when these changes happen, how a kid's progressing? Because one of the big selling points of math, when we first decided to pay for it and over the years, is that you can follow a certain child. And is that true?
Yeah, you can do that.
Your RIT score is still, it doesn't change.
Okay.
It's just the percent.
Their scale score, yeah.
Right, so you could follow the RIT score of a group?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So there is a portion of that test that you could follow despite these readjustments that they're making?
Absolutely.
Despite that, you.
Yeah, to answer that specific question, to take your group as a whole and see, yes.
Like, fourth grade this year at Huntertown, how's fifth grade doing? Or how's Susie doing? And all these readjustments aren't going to affect that. So there is a way that we can use some of math to keep consistent, because it is, and I know everyone's frustrated by this, but we spend so much time on data, so much resources, for very good reasons. But we need to develop a way that isn't going to change every time this data is. Because we keep hearing, well, we can't compare how we improved, because it was a different test or different Y. And so I really would love to see the math, the part that doesn't change, and see if we can start thinking of a way to be consistent within Woodford County despite all the fluctuations around us, because we do need to see.
I agree. And here is, and please, this is stuff that I find kind of fascinating, and it's kind of nerding. So please, just whenever you're like, get in, just get past that. Like, it won't hurt my feelings. The piece that I, so the reason I find myself over explaining like math or any of the data is that you've got to have that very specific question of, overall, a group as a whole, what has, are the RIT scores growing? Because even looking fourth to fifth, because here's what I don't want us to do in this, but I could make this look really good to you for, you know, the chief academic officer, they're going to get better, right? And so like, a fourth-grade group's RIT score is going to go up in fifth grade, even if we're not doing a very good job, because they get older. And they come to school.
But doesn't math set a, I thought math calculates an expected rise?
They do. But that's re-normed sometimes.
So that's what's changing?
Yeah, so, yeah. So you, I mean, I'm not saying we can't do it. I'm just saying we'd have to be careful on the front end of how we answer that question.
Because it is like, you know, well, we can only go back three years, or we can only, I mean, we just have to do, we just have to put our heads together. You guys have a huge command of data. You have a huge dedication to it. It just seems, yeah, the state can do what they want. But I know, and I really thought math, and I think it probably is the best that we do so far as far as consistency.
Yeah. I agree with that. And we're happy with, we're happy with when math does that. We always caution people to not overuse math though, too. Like, not, at this level, it's a perfect use, right, to look at group data and trends. It's, we don't ever want, we don't want parents watching to say, well, they say math is the most important, so if they, my kid's in the twentieth percentile on math, that means this, this, and this. Maybe, let's talk about your kid, right?
Well, and if it means important as far as tracking.
Yes, it's good for that.
It's the best tool we have to track over years.
Yes. Yes. Fully agree with that. Yes. Yes. And it does a really exceptional job at monitoring student growth. And in comparison to like peers, it does a really good job. If you started here, here's where, here is where half of the peers ended up the next year. It does a really good job at that.
So Debbie, do you want to just add that on as a question on the document Jimmy said?
Yeah, I think we will. Are we going to see math data? Or at least with the novice situation, right? Wasn't that what we were using to determine if our novice was reducing with math for the lower grades?
We did that a couple of years ago. It's not in this particular presentation. The math data is not in this particular presentation.
There's no math data in here?
There's not math data. It predicts the end of the year assessment really well. And so we can put that in, it will just verify what's in. I will just tell you, you could look at the state data, and you could like.
Mirror.
Mirror math data. I mean, it looks the same. Yeah, but we can, yeah, we can show that.
We're using FAST at K-1 now.
Progress test.
Yeah. I thought we, okay, well, maybe we just need to be clear on what we're trying to, I thought that reducing the novice was still a focus and still something we were monitoring closely. So, and I thought math was what was, we were going to try to monitor group to group. So we know if Susie was novice last year, well, we had lots of discussions about the high school, because that was difficult. But I thought it was pretty sick how we were doing that in the lower grades with math. So we don't know this data tonight.
Are you asking if we monitor that internally or if it's in this PowerPoint?
I guess both.
Yes, we do monitor that.
Well, that's something I need to add, is what I want to see. And if we've changed the test that we're using for math, now are we going to say, oh, we can't monitor that because we changed them out in FAST or whatever?
Oh, okay. I must get this out.
All right.
Other questions before we launch in? And then with data, please ask questions. I have learned, when you give data presentations, don't talk over the data, right? That's what I'm always taught. Don't talk over the data. Put the data up and let people look at the data. So that's what I will try to do. But I definitely will entertain any questions I can ask now, and then I will get answers for the other ones.
Can I ask you one more question about steady progress? Like, if you go to the fourth, you go to the fifth, you said just because you're older, you'll make progress, right?
Yeah, when you look at, when you look at it, right, right, right. Yeah, yeah. Right. Yeah, we say, you know, the large educational body of research, anything that, you know, just showing up and going to school will give you about a point four effect size, right? So we don't look at, we always, because kids will make gains just by being older and coming to school, regardless of what you do. So we're trying to have a bigger effect size than that. Yeah. Is that math?
So I can, we can go back to that and consider that, so.
So those are our gifted and talented numbers there. I'll let you just look at those.
I've got some questions. To allow time for people to look, or do you want to just?
Y'all are.
So I see the number of students with an IEP that are identified as gifted. What's the total number of students identified with an IEP in Woodford County?
That's, that's a three ninety-six.
Not as, that is not in the gifted?
Total three ninety-six, yes. So there would be, yes, yep. So forty-nine of them or forty of them are.
And actually, that's higher.
Nice year.
I think that's last year's data.
This is, this is for twenty eighteen, nineteen?
Yeah, because I think we increased that number.
Yeah, this would, she, this would be last school year. She wouldn't have December one.
Okay, so you're saying that of the three hundred ninety-six, twenty-five of them are gifted?
That's it.
Okay. And that's three percent, I guess.
And I know I asked this question last year. How do you feel we're doing on differentiated content, especially given the audit results?
Yeah, that's a great question. I feel we're doing better than we were, and I'm confident, this is an I feel statement, I'll be honest, this is an I feel. I feel we have areas for improvement still. I mean, I still think we have to be, we have to be more intentional about that fourth question especially, you know, as it relates to the PLC process. What do we do when they already know it? And as we work through the PLC process, the natural, we're in year four, year four of really emphasizing PLCs. Spoke to a school this past week, and they say it's about a five-to-ten-year process, you know, five, the earliest you really feel great about it. And I think we've got the first two questions really well done. I think the third and the fourth question are still a growth. So what, what do we do when they don't know it? And what do we do, what do we do when they already know it? It's still a growth area. Absolutely.
I wondered if that might be something that if it was added on to the parent-teacher conference to be addressed at each time that we do that, if that might keep it more front and center, so that you can show what differentiation has been given on those kids that have tested as being gifted and talented, so that that's a, something that we're being mindful of in a more regular setting.
And I do think that comes out on the reports, when you get the reports, the gifted and talented reports, and the different paperwork from the teacher, and even, I think, did you add to campus appeal with that?
Yeah, we've done a lot. And again.
But it's a drop-down box that a parent, that teachers.
It's a lot better than it used to be, you know, when we used to really struggle with getting those reports even out. Just, again, being honest, we've really worked hard to make it better, but could they still be more individualized? Yeah, we're continuing. Michelle does a lot with trying to encourage the practices of doing that. Some of it is physical, some of it is time, but yeah, we're trying to make it, we're trying to make it as, the tricky part is, we do have a large number of students who are identified gifted and talented. So there's, when twenty-five percent, you got a thousand of those that need to be filled out. And how we have a process to get a thousand filled out accurately for the teachers is not an easy, it's not just to pass around Jimmy's folder to all the teachers and send it home. There's just too many of them. And so we've worked to have a system in place so that we can be more intentional. So we feel like we've got the system, and now we have to work with kind of the education of how to utilize it to really give the feedback that parents want related to this.
And I do think it's to our credit, to your old's credit, that we have such a high percentage of students that are identified. When I went to the training, the last KSBA conference, we talked about the excellence gap, and that's part of the reason why I wanted to ask for some of this data, for you to include it. But, but to have those numbers, even the equity audit pointed out how great that is. You know, it's a real credit to the district and a real credit to, you know, just the focus of providing excellent service and to addressing the excellence gap. And honestly, that's pretty incredible, because as I sat through the training, it was clear, that's not a focus of a lot of schools. And just the fact that you guys have been putting the data together and looking at that and trying to address that, and then some actions that the board has taken as far as with gifted and talented staffing and different things like that, I think, you know, it's apparent that that's something that we are focused on, that is important.
I agree with, but I do think if you gather the data and identify. But I do think if you gather the data and identify them, but then don't do anything different in their instruction.
Right, and that's always, always been the issue.
That it's just, just data.
Yeah, I was on the gifted and talented committee, I'm thinking two or three years ago, and, uh, I think out of that whole process, the big, uh, thing was we must have a district coordinator, I was thinking part-time and it ended up being full-time, as opposed to, um, stipend positions in each school. So let me first ask, do we still have the stipend positions in each school? Those never went away even with the, even with creating a whole new full-time position up here, okay? Um, and, and the other thing, every time I've ever dealt into gifted in my 10 years here is, yeah, we're great at identifying, well, we're better than we used to be, actually, we used to not even identify, so we have all these kids identified, but honestly, it doesn't sound like, um, we're serving them yet, even with the new resources that we've put towards this, and we just kind of feel like we're differentiating or, so, and I know this has been an area on our C-dip in the past, um, but it's not now, like, I think, um, and, and so, you know, I mean, I, I just, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I say I feel because I don't have the data up there, like, so I, I'm always honest when I'm feeling something versus showing something.
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure, and I don't mean to pick on that, but, you know, that's honest and, and we, we are in a data-driven, so we need to have data.
You know, the data that we can definitely get you is, is they do report now, um, as part of state accountability, they do report, uh, gifted achievement on state accountability, and they haven't always done that, that is a new thing.
So is that, and did that come out last year on our accountability?
Uh-huh, yes.
Or is this just starting?
It came out last year, yeah.
What did you say, Dr. Johnson?
We have two years. They only, if, if you're identified specific academic reading, you don't roll up into that report, we don't know why that decision was made, it wasn't made by, but if you're a, if you're identified as a general intellectual GI, so that, that, those are the only students that are reported on that gifted.
So when our numbers were different when it rolled out, it, when things don't match, it pushes me over the edge. So they only, and like Jimmy said, why they did it this way, I don't know, but they only report out GT as GI kids.
So the report shows their performance, not increase or anything?
Well, you've been trending over two years now.
But then again, that's also a state thing, right?
That one is, yeah.
That's not something we're state testing, gathering and using.
And one of the things on the equity audit and on the equity action plan is for us to develop a system so that we're able to drill down more intentionally on different subgroups, gifted and talented even included, that is, uh, that has been my, that has been a five-year quest for me to figure out how to do that well. You know, and at a simplest, you would sit in a room and you would say, this kid's gifted, put him in as gifted, and that, but when you're talking about a 4,000 students and stressed teachers and principals, it's hard to get that to just, you want it to just spit out so you can look at the data, everyone wants to look at the data, but the compiling is, is what we're, yeah, you'd have to do right now, the only way to do it is by hand, and we've been looking and looking, we've tried some options to get it to do it and nothing works.
You mean, look, what are you trying to do?
So that, so that you, you can ask me how our gifted students, what I would love to be able to do is you say, Mr. Remhauer, are our gifted students performing? And I would be able to go to MAP, click a few buttons and pull that subpopulation out on any specific assessment, or say, how are they doing in classroom assessments? And I would be able to say, gifted students, you know, in my head, it should be a computer program where I would say, you know, I want gifted students, MAP, uh, two, three-year trends, right? And it would just spit out a report, right? That should exist.
In reality, it's Martha with a tally list.
Right, and of course, people aren't always gifted.
Is that data that you can, um, like blind, can you take the student identifiers out with that?
Yes, yes.
Or like assign a number rather than a name?
Yeah, so here's what I've, here's what we've discovered kind of from trying to work out, is that we upload to like a data warehouse and then you can pull data down. But data warehouses again are only as good as what goes in, so you, you've got to, A, make sure they're, so it's got to be something that's identified and into the campus as ones, which they are, but that's, it's how it's identified when the computer program pulls it so that it knows that that means what that means, and that's a whole process. Uh, and then it pulls it down quickly, and, and what I've essentially learned is that the computer programming necessary to do what we want it to do, to what we would like it to run as an education field are the same type of analytics that all companies want right now, and to be quite honest, education doesn't have the money of a pharmaceutical company that also wants to be able to run that, those type reports, so it's just, it's.
So if you're able to blind that, I know someone who would be happy to come and donate their time, this is.
They're trying to figure that problem out.
What they do at UK.
Okay.
And.
Well, and, yeah, and the other thing is, some of these kids are in music, okay?
Right.
So do we really expect their, you know, how do you?
So how, so how many different categories of gifted and talented are there?
Yeah, so.
I mean, are there gifted, talented kids in dance or, okay. So how do you, how do we, how do you know if they've grown in music? How do you service them? And does a school district get any kind of, I don't want to add on.
No.
For having a certain amount of, so how do we, I, I obviously can see how we can service drama, music, art, but how do we, with dance, how are you, how are they qualified as gifted and talented?
We have, uh, we actually, you can see we haven't done a great job at identifying gifted and talented, but we have worked over, one of, uh, Michelle's, the task over the last year was to work with the, uh, the arts, all of the, the, um, art, music, dance, drama around an identification process, so we have put together a strong identification process this year, they're gonna do, uh, nominations and then an actual like portfolio or like an actual, um, come perform. In the past, the dance has very much just been basically a jot-down screener, where you just, you identify on teacher input, which is a good first step, but it certainly can over-identify as well, so we have worked to, to, to increase that. Service in dance is not gonna be simple, I mean, that's not, I mean, I'm not, we'll, we're gonna try to figure it out, but.
Five?
Yeah.
Five students, yeah.
Jimmy, can you go back to that other slide, please?
That one?
Yep. Why is the, uh, where it says white students, the percentage of white students in the GT program is much, much greater than African-American or white students? Can you explain that?
Mm-hmm, yeah, uh, that's, um, that is what we generally see, um, in, in the educational field, there's a, there's, you know, there's different people are gonna have different working theories, I'll give you my working theory on that. I think that, um, a lot of gifted identification still relies on, um, observation, right? That's still a big piece of, of giftedness, um, and that I think a lot of times we naturally, so I'm gonna include myself, I'm a white male, so what I'm going to, um, the bias I'm gonna naturally carry with me is that I'm going to see people as academically gifted when they act the way I generally act, right? That's, that's not a fault of anybody, that's not, that's just what we all do, right? And so you always have to be intentional about that bias and making sure that we're not, um, over-identifying or under-identifying based upon that. And, and we, that number has gotten a lot better over the last three to four years, if we were to trend that, uh, we've been very intentional about trainings around that, but also in the equity plan was that piece that we continue to train, and I had a, um, excuse me, I didn't have a call with her. But if I, uh, I would work with Michelle on, um, on how exactly we're gonna, we're gonna train, more than just gifted, right? But that's been, her position's gonna really work on training everybody on, on the identification of talent, that it doesn't always look like, you know, a traditional way.
And we have given other, other assessments, uh, so it's not just the standardized test, because typically your underserved populations do not perform as well on a standardized assessment, uh, because there is a built-in bias a lot of times on standardized tests. And so we have given other measures, um, to, um, see if students who, um, may have that, um, that gifted ability, if they can perform on a different test, some of those are given orally, some of those are given, uh, we've done some in a native language so that, uh, students, uh, who, um, might be limited English proficient but still are extremely bright, it gives them an opportunity to be identified. And so we have tried to, uh, take some strides and those numbers are higher than they have been, but we still have work to do.
If 21 is much, much better, what were the numbers?
They were lower than that, yeah, I mean, they weren't, I mean, that was a major, it was a major concern, and I'm gonna give kudos where kudos is due. Uh, Emma Schneidmuller, who is no longer with us, was a teacher in the GATE program who was fantastic, and she, she was amazing, um, and she really confronted this head-on and she, that's why we changed to the Negli area, which will continue to identify, um, more students. So yeah, and, and again, I just, that, that's a T, you know, that's a teacher saying this is an issue, we appreciate hers.
So I just did some quick math, we'll see if it's good. White students, 40% of our white students are identified. So you've got 799 over 2972, that's about 40% of our white students are identified gifted. Does that seem high?
Uh, you, yeah.
Yeah, am I right in my math? I think I am, I'm close, so, um, so that's very high, and I know that we want to be aggressive on this, but do we run the risk of over-identifying?
Sure.
And then what meaning does it have and that makes it even harder to serve, so, um, yeah. And the other thing is, um, I think our policy qua, uh, and we're doing it somewhat tonight, but that we get a, a report every year on gifted and talented, um, I think we need to get that on the, an agenda in the next couple of months and really drill down, maybe have some teachers here who are in charge of the differentiation and the central office person and just kind of drill down, well, I think we've got to identify now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, um, but drill down on top of the next step, which is actually doing something for these kids, but.
I know, white students, I got 27%.
So I did 799 over 2972, is that, um?
That's about 7.
Oh, okay, well, then I just did my math wrong.
Divide by 2.
You times by 2.
Well, I was rounding out, I was doing the estimate, you know, eight over 30, but.
Well, and, and I do think it's important to say, um, you know, when, like, my personal experience with the gifted and talented and differentiation in the classroom was great, you know, I had more than one child identified and, and the services provided were great and they were good from elementary on to high school, I felt like it was, was a very, uh, the teachers did a very good job with that. So, you know, I think there might be, you know, data is different than personal experience, so I think, yeah, I mean, I think data would be nice to, nice to have, um, because I think personal experience is good, but, but I think the data would be really good.
Yeah, one piece I will celebrate with, um, is all of our schools are, um, and this is from feedback from the board in the past that we've gotten very directly, and we, uh, said we're gonna tackle that, we're not going to stand, my exact words were, I'm not gonna stand in front of them again and tell them we're working on primary talent pool in hopes of that, hope that it's better soon, I'm not gonna do that again. Like I've said that too many times, they're going to tackle me if I try that again. Um, and so we, um, we have been working on it, but what we were very intentional about this year is that every one of our elementary schools, we have primary thinking skills as a weekly, a minimum of weekly block for students that are identified, which is a program, um, that, that really harnesses the gifted, the, those students who we identified as, uh, potentially gifted at a young age, which is what primary talent pool is, and it really asks them to use their convergent and divergent thinking very intentionally, and so we've ensured that that is taking place within every one of our schools, and we started a very young talent identification and talent growth. So that is a major celebration in terms of, of servicing, that, that I will give kudos to all of the people that worked around the, um, the gifted services and making sure that we've, uh, we have implemented. And, and again, I appreciate that comes from these conversations, when, when, when we have the honest conversations, say we need to do primary talent better, we are doing primary talent better, uh, but we need to continue to improve as we feel like we do with everything, so.
Okay, so we'll get that on the agenda and have some real specifics, like different schools about what differentiation looks like and make sure that we have the right, you know, anyway.
Yeah, with that look, um, I just want to make sure we, uh, what, what you're asking for there, obviously we'd have our district gifted coordinator, but we do still have those stipend positions, so working with those, those people to kind of, um, all be present at that gifted report, would that be, that's kind of what I think.
Whoever can really give the specifics on, yeah, because I think that, again, identification is great, you know, we really improved that, and that's what we've been hearing about, so I think it's time, I would really like to hear about the next step, you know, with each other.
I'm sure those people would love the chance to share, so.
Well, and I know.
Truly, yeah, they're working hard, yeah.
At the schools, a lot of times we'll have, that some of the kids from gifted and talented pool that do different things that come into presentations and then they give us information about that, so it is always nice to kind of just see what different schools are doing, because I do think different schools do it a little bit differently, but to have the, set aside time to have the, this is how we do it, just provide it to us in one, one meeting would be really nice.
All right. Want to shoot for February on that?
Yeah.
Ready for the ACT?
Ready.
So those are, um, trend data by subject and by composite, so.
Were you surprised after having the additional test for a year?
These kids haven't gotten it.
So this is just tracking seniors?
Juniors, but they didn't test it as a sophomore.
This is last year's juniors.
They said, okay, this is last year's, end of year juniors.
Yes.
Yes. So not.
They did, yeah, that'll come this year.
Just on the chart.
This year I'll have data on that.
Gotcha.
And I'll also have two years worth of sophomore data, so I can have, I've got a baseline from last year.
Has the test changed?
It's always available, uh, they'll never, ACT will never say that. Overall state scores have declined over the last couple of years, which has led a lot of people to believe that, but I will officially not.
And then you would have to say, well, in 2016, 17, we, are those kids just had an easy test, that's why they got high, I mean, I don't think it's changed enough that you can blame the test.
But if you look at our trend, almost there is, it's down.
Oh, yeah.
So we're, yeah, I totally agree with that.
What was the state average?
So the interesting thing that we've found, um, and it is down, and we are not thrilled with that, let's be very transparent on that, is though it has fallen, we haven't fallen in terms of normatively, right? So that's what I say, but it's very interesting, like, so we, um, we've fallen a little, I'm not gonna say we haven't fallen zero, but I, at one time I had those numbers memorized, and you might still know them, Mr. Hoffman, we were say the, we were say the, um, 20th best high school in English, our scores went down, and now we're the 23rd, right? It's not, it's so.
In Kentucky or?
In Kentucky, yeah.
Oh, where, yeah.
And is this on their composites, is this only the one testing date?
Yes.
Or is this the best score?
No.
That is the March date only.
They only take a March date.
That's hard, too.
So that's hard, and what you have, what I always factor in, that is a huge aspect to me, is if you're taking those dual credit classes and you've already hit this March date, this is not their highest, this is what they get on that March date.
But that's true for everybody in Kentucky.
Right, I just, it does change so much in that.
Well, I know, it changes for the kids who are able to take it over and over, you know, but for some kids, this is it, and this is a true, and this is an accountability thing, that you're, it's supposed to account what you've learned in school, not what you're getting a class on outside of school. And so once they made this the whole accountability test, it's like, you know, just kind of the general knowledge of our students who don't do all, give that advantage.
But the big, the big difference is that the standards that we teach are not the ACT standards.
Well, and the standards.
No, but I'm, I'm just saying, though, I mean, it's not necessarily a true measure of what they've learned at high school, it is to some extent.
Or what they should learn at.
But it's not.
Yeah.
It doesn't match the standards, and so that's, that does make it a little bit, a little bit more unique, whereas, you know, before, they were a little bit more aligned when we were doing the end of course, because they were, that they were much more aligned to the ACT, because the AC, but, because the, the end of course assessments were given, were generated by the same, by the same company, so.
Yeah, and it's not, but those just, but sorry, just kind of a portion of kids. So didn't, when did we start having a whole class for ACT prep? It's been at least, to go by my, I'm thinking two or three or. It's been at least, to go by my, I'm thinking two or three or maybe three or.
Three years, we've had it at least three years.
Three years or four, yeah.
Yeah, three or four, yeah.
Where we, where we had, yeah, where you could just, that was counted as a credit in high school, just to take the ACT prep for a semester, so.
We've been giving the, what's the test?
Cert.
Yeah, and that's supposed to be a, a helpful indicator.
Yeah.
But again, that's also contingent on the kids taking it seriously and not just completing it because it's a requirement when they know it has no teeth.
But that's any accountability test, and I think that's part of the reason they moved to the ACT, because they thought kids would care more.
I think so.
Because they certainly did not care about the other.
Disagree.
Well, the end of the course they cared about.
Do you have a breakdown on this by race, free and reduced lunch, that type of thing?
We don't need any of that.
We, we have it, we don't have it in here, but we will get that to you as well.
We don't have our gap scores.
Was yours in here?
Yes.
We're back. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Did you hear who's saying the state average was eighteen on the composite?
Can you, can you pull it up on the screen? There's a lot of opportunity there, isn't there?
So, I'll just, so we take a ACT score and it's assigned a novice upon us, okay. All right, is that something we set?
No, this data, this is just the second year I've been doing that.
So what is the range for each group?
For now, I think it's fifteen.
It's novice, fifteen and under is novice.
So zero to fifteen is novice. No.
And proficiency is. Like the, the college career rating.
Which is eighteen?
Which is eighteen, nineteen and twenty, it is eighteen for reading, nineteen for math, twenty for.
Science?
No, twenty for English.
So the cut scores for reading, sixteen to nineteen is an apprentice, a twenty to twenty-six is proficient, twenty-seven to thirty-six is distinguished.
Wow, sorry, say that again, sixteen to nineteen.
Sixteen to nineteen is apprentice, twenty to twenty-six is proficient, twenty-seven to thirty-six is distinguished. It, that's reading, yes, math, sixteen to eighteen apprentice, and then the same for proficient, distinguished, nineteen to twenty-six and twenty-seven to thirty-six. Science, sixteen to twenty-one is apprentice, twenty-two to twenty-six is proficient, twenty-seven to thirty-six is distinguished.
Do we, do we know what these were last year? I guess I could go back and look, what had this change from last year?
It's not because some of these aren't, like, in the problem.
So we only have sixteen juniors that are African-American.
And I will say, so the other, we do have to be careful with sample sizes on, on a lot of this data, yeah, not both ways, I just, yeah.
And then like disability, are those sometimes, are those a lot higher like in elementary school because kids are still getting speech therapy and stuff, I mean, because.
Well, well, the goal with, the goal with, you know, the goal is that, not that, a lot of students have lifelong disabilities, so I'm not saying, but I don't mean that. But I mean, like, some students who just need the support, especially since you're like developmentally delayed, your, your hope is that you get them caught up and you can dismiss them.
So by high school, those numbers really diminish.
Yeah, that's what you, they'll, they'll always go down, right, you very, rarely do you identi, it happens, do you identify a student in high school as needing an IP? You usually identify them prior to high school, but you will dismiss them all the way through, so the high school number is always going to be the lowest.
So the thing I was asking about was, like on the ACT, it's got English nineteen-eight, math nineteen-nine, composite twenty point five. Do you have the total scores by, by race, free and reduced lunch, what they're, what those scores are? Because that's something different than this, isn't it?
They're composites, they're composites, you mean, yes, yeah, this is just reading and math, so yes, can you mean, can we get composite, African-American composite, yeah.
Well, and this you have by novice, and are you asking for the exact score?
Score.
And not in this novice range, but yeah.
So we broke it up for novice.
Put that on the question.
Yeah, I was, I was talking about.
The exact.
The overall.
Yeah, free and reduced, you know, white, African-American, free and reduced lunch.
With the, with the average of nineteen point two as opposed to as a novice.
What?
And Miss Ellen, I have last year's numbers.
Okay, great.
Uh, the percent novice last year for disability for reading was seventy-three point nine.
So compared to sixty-five, okay.
Math was fifty-six point five. Do you want all of them or just novice?
Can you just send it to us?
Yeah. So composite ACT is twice that group and then.
Can you just reiterate what you said all those ranges were, because I think you called those.
I'll put that in the sheet too for you.
Okay.
This does have large amounts of trend data for you, this is AP passing rates. The one caveat to AP passing rates is they do report percentages always, and I think that's good, one piece of data, they don't report numbers. But nonetheless, you have a large. But we can dig into any of that data, I'll try to talk over the data.
So is there not a number of how many kids took it?
They will have to buy that piece of shit, very important.
But we should know, overall.
Yeah, and I would call this in my question. If they would just send that to us in a report form and they said they no longer are applying that information.
Is comparative government, what class is that?
Is it AP World? We had two kids.
Yeah, that's an independent study, yeah, I'm trying to think who teaches it.
But we only have two kids test. But cause Miss Friday, even though AP won't send that to me, I can tally it to me because I did.
That AP Euro score is great, because that was a terribly hard test.
That is a terrible.
Yes.
There's a lot of ground to cover in European history.
I'm glad you're offering it, my kids couldn't take it because they weren't the kids taking it.
Well, and over three years from, the three years they've had, we went from fourteen, sixteen to now eighteen kids.
So eighteen took it last year, that's great. How many took the physics?
What about calc A B? That used to be our.
Yeah, we have a lot of kids that do dual credit now too, which is another piece with our overall numbers and calc have gone down, but how many took it?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, yeah, we used to have like.
Two sections of it.
Two, three sections of it.
And, and we've always.
And did no one take AP World? Is that the? Or didn't no one pass it?
One took it.
One, but they did not pass.
They also have US history dual credit now, so.
Yeah, those are the numbers you see sharply declining in AP scores.
How many?
We're in AP numbers.
Numbers, yeah, enrollments.
How many took AP US government?
Ninety.
Do you have the total number of kids?
Those are younger, yeah, those are, we have younger kids, that's a lot of their first AP course, so that which is pretty cool, because it gives them, a lot of them will take it still, they can't do dual credit yet. It's a cool class.
And.
Looked over.
My neighbor's a freshman and lost his binder for US government one night, it was just a mess, because it was his first, so it's just, I mean, he found it, but it was, I mean, that, they really take that seriously, it's a great opportunity to offer kids, he's an awesome kid.
And what about, that's a huge jump on AP English literature, went from fifty-three percent up to eighty-four percent.
Numbers went from thirty-two to nineteen.
Okay, that's what I wondered.
Same about data.
Yes.
Same about data.
As long as when we see a virus in the cell, I do.
Yeah, that's what I'm always.
Denominate.
See how great we're doing with those scores, you can't even question us.
Well, that's why it was so hard when I made these slides, because if you give me like five minutes, I probably have it here, or you want to know all about my post-it notes and stuff. It's just condensing to try to be a summary of what the data is telling a true story, you know, without digging too far into the details and weeds, because Jimmy, I mean, he'll tell you, I can get pretty deep and it gets annoying to him, but I, this is.
What was your question, like that's what we're always, what was the question we're trying to answer? I don't know, I just got curious, yeah, that's why we didn't do it until we have a question to answer.
Last year, did we get a number like on how many college credits the kids got, because, you know, we are, it is a little discouraging that AP numbers are going back, but that's because it's been replaced. And a lot of kids, it's something that is better for them, great, good.
I mean, the number of, I mean, we had seven hundred and twenty-six city and county credit class.
That's amazing.
That three years ago, I think, was twenty-six.
Yeah, we had like just the ones that went to Georgetown and then a few that went to D C and now.
Twenty-six was the real number, because I looked it up just today to make sure.
Yeah, this is a huge, yeah, and.
Well, and the savings to parents, when you look at the average college per credit hour of five hundred and ninety-four dollars, to have kids earning that many credits. And we have kids routinely, numerous kids going into college as soon as they graduate in May, going in in August and, and being sophomore status.
Sophomore.
Yes, yes, we truly do, and, and that savings to parents, that's amazing, plus the experience for the children and, you know, I think, once they've had some success, it's a lot easier to kind of figure out your freshman year of college when you've already taken a dual credit class and, and figured out how to kind of, you know, balance your time and talk to the teacher and do the online portions, I mean, that's just, that's an incredible opportunity for our students.
Yeah, it's one of the things we're probably, yeah, you know, this is my fifth year here, and I will say, you know, there are a lot of things we're very proud of, but I would probably mark the number of increasing student enrollment over the increases as something we're very proud of, what we've been able to do because of the impact it has on all families, but especially families who are first generation college. Not only the financial aspect, but the idea that, you know, my mom didn't go to college, my dad didn't go to college, my grandma didn't go to college, but I can start college right here with a face I know, right? Like, I can start and, I kind of, hey, you know, like, like that, yeah, there, there's a lot of.
Well, it increases diversity too in the classroom, I mean, you have your, like you said, free and reduced lunch, you have your gap kids, you have your, you know, kids that are just really, really great at testing and college stuff, but not so great to turn the homework in, that can excel at this and see that colleges an option, so.
Okay, this just came out last week.
Yeah, this is, we, so, yeah, go ahead, Mark.
No, I was just saying, last week.
This is kindergarten readiness data, so this is percentage of students ready for kindergarten, so this is that birth to five thesis, yeah, we'll, we'll. Yeah, so this is birth to, like, these are kids that are coming to us, so before we've had the, we do have some preschool students in there, but that is just overall.
This is every kid who gets screened in August, right before they start us in kindergarten, and this is in terms of percent ready for kindergarten based on the Berdamp screener, which is a statewide test. So what was interesting to me is if you look back to our current sixth graders where they came in versus where they're coming in now, and then.
Is it, I know they changed the age range, did that?
That should have made it better.
Right, that's what I was going to say, I thought maybe I misremembered.
They made them a year, that's why I went down the red book, but for another district, what made me think of it, and Jimmy and Scott, I came in one more, I was like, I saw something on the news and a district was tallying their kindergarten readiness score and their overall was so much higher than ours, yet when you look at our K prep scores, we were higher. So it was just really interesting to me to see, it doesn't matter how much the drop has been, we have still maintained our performance, so it's really, it was a testament, I think, to our schools of how much they work with those kids once we get them to really move them forward. So this is something, I said, I just dug into this Thursday or Friday, I shared.
It just came out.
It'd be interesting to see that fifteen, sixteen class.
Well, I started.
Is that the year the age changed?
No, the age changed last year.
Yeah.
Eighteen, nineteen.
But I'm just saying how low.
Yeah.
It's interesting.
Daycare was going on in Norfolk County back then, it was more local versus the only one in town.
So you've seen our free and reduced lunch percentage have increased as well over that time fairly significantly, and we know that families who are, who are eligible for free and reduced lunch also have less time and ability to, to do a lot of the kindergarten readiness skills. That's just a, that's just, that's a reality, that's not a knock on anybody situation, is that if you're working three jobs to make ends meet, it's very difficult to come home and, and work on your letters and your sounds and your numbers. And so you generally see that when you look across the state, the higher the free and reduced lunch percentage, the lower the kindergarten readiness, just, again, that's just an opportunity, not ability, that's opportunity, right? That's an opportunity gap for, for certain students, so we've seen those numbers increase as well and seen the kindergarten readiness numbers match that.
Jimmy, if you have, if you look at the kindergarten readiness numbers of this year and years leading up, it's indisputable that Simmons has by far the lowest readiness, not only this year, but every year. Do we do anything different for that school regarding kindergarten instruction? To help lift those kids up compared to the other schools?
So that's an in-depth question, yes is the, is the answer, you're going to ask what, I assume?
Yes.
Or you just go with yes?
No.
Yes, we do. We, so a number of different things that Simmons has done, one, they have a much more intensive social emotional learning program at their school than our other four, or other three schools, because their data shows them that, that a lot of kindergarten readiness is directly proportional, you know, the social emotional is right there too, right? So if they're not ready academically, they're also not ready social emotionally, so we have a very robust social emotional program, especially in kindergarten at Simmons, and kudos to Simmons staff for, for emphasizing that so, so deeply and so, so strongly. They are very intentional about, they recognize they have to teach every kindergartner every single day, social emotional teaching and learning, but the data shows them they have to do that. They've also have, they've also tried different things, some of them successful, some of them not, but we have definitely given them the support to, we, they have a lot of students that, that come to kindergarten not speaking English as a, as their first language, and so they have been very intentional about pouring in supports to those kindergarten students with, with language skills, including teaching them some and having dual language teachers available to those students in the classroom.
You're talking about things that the staff does there, I'm talking about the school system as a whole, what do we do to help that school knowing?
Yeah.
Knowing that those kids are going to come in. Knowing that those kids are gonna come in so further down when it comes to readiness.
Do we provide extra?
Yeah, like, are you asking about staffing policy? Like, there's nothing in staffing policy.
Yeah, staffing or resources like.
Yeah, any of that. Staffing, resources, instructional assistance.
Yeah. I mean, it's a title for one school.
Right, so they get, yeah, so.
So do we use our money, well, they have their own part of Title I.
Right, so they have a larger proportion of Title I fines.
Um, that they did, they probably use.
They have the Oregon's proportion.
Yes, so they, so, so there's a lot of.
What does that equate to in here?
How much more?
How much total?
Um, so, they get, so, so it's depending on your percentage of students free and reduced lunch of how much per student you get in Title I. So, because Simmons is our school with the highest percentage of, uh, students on free and reduced lunch, they get the, they get like four hundred and forty-five, five hundred and forty-five dollars per free and reduced lunch student in Title I. Right, so that's how that's figured. Whereas our, uh, I think Huntertown has our, um, lowest percentage, so they only get like four hundred and twenty dollars in Title I per free and reduced lunch student. And then that's how you calculate your Title I money. That's, that's all federal, like, that's not.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, when do these screenings, these screenings are right before they start? Because isn't it used to do them like in May, or you could go in?
We do them, we do them the week before students start. Before students start, yeah. So most districts do them once they start, um, and we don't do that. We have talked about that. Um, but, uh, we still feel like that's, you know, once they're there, we don't, you know, we don't wanna put a kid, you know, we wanna know what they are when they got to us. Like, we want a true reflection of that.
I was just wondering if we did it earlier, we could start kids who aren't ready three weeks earlier. And just have like a little intense this is school before all the other kids are ready come.
One seventy-two.
Yeah, there's some cool programs around that.
Are, are the, do people do that?
Yeah, um, this is not a tooting my head horn, so I'm sorry, like, it's gonna sound like that. I just apologize. I just know the example, like, so when I was a, when I was a principal, we did start a, uh, jumpstart program where we identified, um, uh, kindergartners who we knew were gonna need a lot of extra support and started them, uh, a couple days early.
Just a couple of days, yeah.
Yeah, just so they can learn, and it was just all social, like, it's like, this is what school looks like, right? This is how we're gonna get our lunch, this is how we're gonna stand in line. We're, we're gonna play games. This is a safe, fun place for you, and then just any of those little programs even that just get them, um, so that on the first day of school, they're, they're not, uh, they're gonna have so many stressors on the first day of school. You know, all of a sudden, there's all these big kids that they, that you just kind of knock that down. It's, it's not a high cost, it's a pretty easily cost.
I mean, I think two days isn't, because, isn't this readiness everything from can you sit and listen to, do you know your ABCs? So, if you wanna catch them up in all the areas, you might be longer.
Would it be, this is your obvious area of expertise, uh, would it be, would it help that school if you had maybe an extra teacher instead of twenty-five to one, you had twenty to one, that type of thing? Or you had more instructional assistants in each classroom? I'm just, I'm just asking.
You know, the.
Because it seems to be very predictable every year.
Mm-hmm.
But I do think one thing that we are doing is with having the preschools in the elementary, those kids are getting an early start, so the kids that qualify for some of the preschool programs, or some of the kids that are, are gap kids, or some of the kids that might be scoring lower on these assessments. So they can come in and have, you know, um, preschool services at the school, so they can get used to the school, they can get used to the routine, they can get used to things.
Yeah, but I don't see that reflecting in the numbers.
What they, what they may be able to do is not reflective of what they're doing.
Well, but the other thing is, I think everybody has the same curriculum too, and, and it looks like what the data is showing, like, that we're gonna get to later, is that Simmons has made really good gains, and Northside has made really good gains. So regardless of where they start out, they have the curriculum that's solid for every kindergartner, Northside, Southside, Huntertown, Simmons, the same curriculum, and they all have the exact same learning, um, opportunities once they're there. So I think that really is important too, and I understand that, that we need to focus on the early end.
But if you follow that logically, then does kindergarten readiness not matter? Because we're able to catch them up, get their scores, you know, like, I haven't looked at them as closely as Sherry, but so does it even matter?
So birth of, so, so to me, it, it becomes, it's, it's where our CEP initiative is so important, like, just, like, around the, um, the community collaboration and partnership. Um, we wanna take a huge role in kindergarten readiness, birth to five. But we need, we need everybody on board with that initiative.
But you understand my question, like, if our scores are the same, no matter how ready you are when you went to kindergarten, is that a predictor, or is that even important?
It's important.
I know it's important too, but, but you see what the problem, and I haven't looked at the scores that closely, but if these kids are catching up.
We can't catch them up.
Equal to their peers by fourth grade, because we're doing such a good job with them.
Yeah, and there's a lot of people that argue against, uh, preschool for all, that's a name, that, that, that we can catch them up, that five, that five is early in, uh, which I disagree with.
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking because.
I understand that, yeah.
If that's what we're saying, I'm, I'm not challenging, I'm just.
You know, and, and I'm gonna be, either this thirty-three, three is a big deal or it is. If it's not a big.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, it's either a big deal or it is. It doesn't seem to be a big deal. That's not a question, it's just a statement.
I think it would be nice to have all of our kindergartners coming in ready, but I do think there are a lot of supports in schools, like, and, and with that local Title I money too. But also district wide, that really, that shows that we are doing a really, really good job. But, but the other side of that is, it, so if they're coming in at thirty-three and we can get them up to even, what if we can get them coming in at thirty-three and, and get them up above? Like, what if those are the excellence kids and we're missing them, and they're missing that gifted and talented identification, because they're, they're growing, they're growing more than maybe you are, but they're not, i- if we started out and did a little bit more, maybe they would grow even more and be able to, you know, achieve even higher, so, I definitely think it's, it's a focus.
There seems to be, when you talk about this, you talk about ACT, you talk about this, you talk about gap, you talk about free and reduced lunch, well, that's just the way it's always been, you know, it all works out in the end. You know, I just. There's some things that you can predict.
Absolutely.
You, you don't have, even I can predict from reading this.
If you can predict it, you can prevent it, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Are you able to share this presentation digitally too?
Oh, yeah.
These are just really tiny numbers.
Yes, and I struggled with that because, because of the way I get the data, it's in percentages, and I can't do an overall elementary.
Sure.
So. Yes.
Thank you.
And I have that in a different format too.
Thank you.
What's next?
Um, let's go, let's just real quick, we're looking COSA pass rates. EOP, end of program pass rates, they changed the name.
Yeah, nothing changed with the name.
We want that.
Yeah.
For the total tests, two fifty-seven out of three fifty-four. One thing, one pass, or one thing, one pass?
I think you take multiple tests.
Not many kids take multiple tests, I don't think. They can. It's, I, I wouldn't say, that's, the, that's not like a hundred kids taking.
No.
You know what I mean? Yeah.
And these are the kids that graduate career ready?
Or dual.
Yeah, or dual. So obviously, we, this is a point of improve, of area of priority improvement, uh, for that honestly, that we can turn data this, and we, and we do see that we, um, we need to, we would like to see this data improve, and, uh, we have worked to ensure that there's intentional structures in place to make that data, we, plans that we believe will improve that data next year.
So nobody took engineering, financial services, early childhood this year?
Correct.
So, is that it, because we didn't have an engineering class? So there was nobody that had taken, I thought Ryan took four years, I mean, they just didn't.
Is, is engineering still?
No.
Just not offered, right? Yeah, okay, I didn't want to stick out a term.
So that, is that no longer than a career-ready path at our high school?
It's a different, uh, way to determine readiness. So an industry certification might be that way, not a COSA test. So those are two different tests a kid can take. Is it industry cert or an EOP? And the engineering has.
Like our allied health kids are getting, uh, certificates.
CNA or something?
Yes, right, right, so they're not taking a COSA.
And then financial services, what do they get?
That is a combination of tests. That can be the ASK test, the mouse test, and then another, um.
Microsoft Office Systems.
Oh, it is?
That's what mouse is, yeah.
So if they still get the certifications, they just wouldn't take it?
Yeah, so they're industry certified.
So, like, I know what a CNA certification can do for you, or even a,
So a mouse.
Even a mouse could do for you, you know, that's a qualification for a job. What is the engineering certification?
I don't know the exact, um, certification title, but the premise behind knowing more of the industry cert route versus EOP is it is more tangible and recognized by businesses. Where Kentucky developed the COSA or the EOP, a lot of businesses wouldn't recognize that. All industry cert tests, for example culinary, it's called the SURF site, that's your food handler certificate. Industries recognize those nationally, so that's why the state is moving to the touch. And there's very strict claimer, it's not even who can administer those tests and how those are done.
Do we have any kind of, um, you know, improvement plan, or any kind of just plan in general to kind of address some of it?
Yeah, so.
Cause it's not, yeah, those are really, really.
Yeah, so the CTE department has, has responded very, uh, they responded positively in terms of action for this data. They, and, and probably the most tangible piece is they have, um, they've, they've developed, um, improved and common assessments around the employability skills, so each of these tests have employability skills half the test almost, isn't it?
Yeah, so, and for their PLC process, before, they found it very difficult to PLC, because some people taught business, some people taught engineering, some people. But in these EOP tests, employability is standard across all CTE classes. So they're working in their PLCs around that data, and being very intentional with that.
Is, when you get these results, are you able to kind of pinpoint where the issues were? Were they in employability, or were they in the content of these specific?
We just get pass rates, yeah, I guess.
You did, okay.
Yeah.
But, but the teachers at the school seem to think that that's.
That's the working hypothesis, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I think they probably have a good sense.
Yeah.
So what is the ag power test?
Like, what, what they do with it?
Or, yeah, what does it?
It's like small, like, small engines would be.
So that's something they go to license for?
No.
How we do that in ours?
Yeah.
All of these were given in a. All of these pathways.
So this is, uh, state testing numbers, perfect, percent proficient distinguished, and percent novice.
Are these blacked out or?
They are, because that's, the, the, the blacked out ones at the bottom are because they didn't.
It didn't print in color easily, and I didn't notice that till we walked in here, so I will share this on that document. When I printed it in color, for whatever reason, it colored.
But you can't read in the red.
Oh, you're, I'm sorry, I'm looking up there, I'm like.
No, up there.
I do it. Welcome to our world.
So the nineteenth's we can't read. If they're in a red or green box, that's what's happening, the printed version.
Okay.
That's why I asked for the digital copy.
Gotcha. So the blacked out boxes are because we didn't, there's a different test was different. Yeah, that's what I thought you were asking about. Like, the high school, that's why you only have two years of data for reading math.
So reading percentage for Huntertown, for nineteen, for proficient distinguished is what?
Sixty-one point seven.
I wanna share that, you'll have.
Okay.
But that, again, the color coding.
Tells you to go up or down.
That helps in my brain, just be able to see it clearly, and then I know where to dig down.
Good. Concerned.
It's not in the theme of Christmas.
And so the reading for the high school was the ACT?
Yes.
Even though we're. Of course.
So the red.
The ACT scores went up overall composite.
Yes, even, but more kids, so what you're gonna have is you're gonna have.
But overall.
Yeah, so, so that's an average, right? That's the, that's the problem with averages, is that.
Went up point three.
Yeah. You have, like, you have a lot of kids in the thirties, it's gonna co- cover up otherwise.
Right.
Yeah, so that's, so it's like looking at it, yeah.
Down from the.
Cause I totally hear what you're saying. Reading went down, so we should be red there, but actually, in more students proficient or distinguished, we just have either not as many super high students or more overly low students.
You want these numbers?
So Huntertown, so for instance, Huntertown went down on every.
Yes, ma'am.
But they were high.
They were high.
The four.
Yes.
So.
But, but basically, you're just comparing Huntertown with Huntertown with the red box in the green box.
Just with Huntertowns, yeah.
Just compares, you know, right, so.
And this right here is an all elementary, so I was able to add up numbers here.
Oh, okay.
And do all elementary numbers.
Yeah, but they, but even though they, wow. Some of these changes are just amazing, but you've got a whole different group of kids you're measuring too. Did we notice those change, you know, when we're gonna show, are we, I don't know if we're gonna get that tonight, or we're gonna show the increase by grade and the, well, maybe novice, but you know, when we're gonna try to compare one group of kids with the same group of kids next year.
So in the past year, so in the, the previous years that we had, we've been around, I think, like seventy to eighty percent green boxes, and we're below that this year. For transparency, yeah, about fifty-five percent green. So if you look at overall, green to red, like, we we would like them to be a hundred percent green, is of course our overall goal, but, um, yeah, there, there's, there's, we would like more green boxes.
Are there increases in it? In enrollment that account for increased numbers? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't feel the numbers are significant.
Are increased, you mean?
Yeah, make the, I don't know, statistically significant.
So then your thoughts on the ones that are red?
Uh-huh.
On why they increased? You have, I mean, is that something that's that you can track back?
That's, that's one of those situations, you really can't just look at one piece of data and try to, that's where you ask other questions. And that's what we try to do when we get a piece of data, is to say, okay, what might this be telling us? And so then you look to, did, were we seeing this on math data? Were we seeing this on assessment data in the, in the classroom? So, then you start to piece together to find out, okay, now are there some things that we need to do differently from an instructional standpoint that could have an impact on that, particularly with our, with our novice? Are we doing some things from a tier two and tier three standpoint that might help move those students forward?
So is this grades four and five?
Three, four, and five.
Three, four, and five. But it's all together, it's not broken down at all by grade?
Not for this, but we have that.
Yeah, the school report.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see that, because this is kind of what I'm interested in. How did last year's third graders at Huntertown do compared to this year's fourth graders? Cause those are the same kids.
The school report is gonna be your best, and we'll get, we'll put it together however you like, but it's the easiest way to.
I mean, you know, so I can see them the next year, and see how those novice numbers went on. All right.
Like, a lot of our principals will do that work, and Mark will help them do that work specifically. And that is, obviously, that would take a lot of slides to present all of that in one, but yeah. So we looked at this already, here's middle school subgroup achievement.
Did the middle school, uh, well, I, I mean, I guess, I don't know the answer, but. Their numbers are significantly different than the high school numbers?
They are.
The high schools, three to ten years?
They test, they test all pre-grade levels.
All pre-grade levels?
Yes, ma'am.
So, yeah, that's what I was, looking at the Hispanic population, there was one distinguished at the high school and twenty at the middle school.
Yeah.
And there were forty-five at the high school, though, there were a hundred less kids.
Yeah.
The percentages can be a little tricky, you have to really...
Yeah, I was not even looking at the percentage, just the number of students scoring distinguished.
And this is where some of our subgroups sometimes, you know, when you have small numbers, as you guys know, it, it can be, you know, huge difference, right? So like, if you looked, I mean, that's, I think African-American proficient distinguished at the middle school is, um, for reading, what is that for? It's like seventy percent? That's, that's incredible. And I, I totally, I, I don't wanna take away that that's incredible. It's a, but if next year, like a few kids, when you're talking about a sample size of twenty-four, a few kids being not proficient distinguished could make that data significantly less. And so you worry about when you look at that trans and, well, what will that mean? You know, like, so if, I mean, just a few kids could really change that percentage, you know, a ten percentage point jump would be huge generally. When you're looking at twenty-four kids, you get three of them to not be proficient distinguished, you're gonna see a ten percentage point jump and you would, you know, what does that mean? You know, what if, if three kids performed better, we're gonna see it the other way. I don't think either of those necessarily mean we're amazing or that we're, you know, that we're, you know, I think, yeah, it's just...
So we had sixteen kids in the junior class of African-Americans. So that's sixteen kids. How easy is it to go back and look where they were in the eighth grade?
Those sixteen kids?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that would be interesting to do. I know it's a small sample.
Yeah.
But comparing individual kids' growth is what it's all about. And it would be interesting to see if they improved or didn't.
Maybe it's all in front of us.
I, you're doing, you would just do the state accountability, so what were they on the eighth grade reading? You know what I mean, versus...
Like, like, were they apprentice, that was, right?
Yeah.
And I know I asked this last year and... So we have, um, these are just for these subgroups, but... And I don't even know if they're eighth graders, actually. But if we have an eighth grader going into high school who is reading at the novice level, what awaits him the first day of high school? What is the plan? Because now we're in high school.
Yeah.
And you're still novice.
Yep.
So...
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, I have an answer. Um, that's where our reading strategies classes come in. So, um, we actually, so in the...
At the high school?
Uh-huh.
Are there reading strategy classes at the middle school?
They're, uh-huh, Read 180. So we, we've used Read 180 as the core, we have other programs there as well, but that's kind of the core, um, program that we use, um, at the middle school for students who are, um, below the twenty-fifth percentile. It's the highest, it's got the highest, um, score on the What Works Experience House in terms of, of research-based strategies. So we've used that, we've also used that program in the past at the high school, but what we've kind of seen and looking at what we've, what we have seen, said it correctly. Uh, but what we have seen is that, uh, when students are, if they're still novice in eighth grade and they go into the high school, if we continue Read 180, that program's not working, right? If Read 180 was going to work, Read 180 would have worked. And so we, uh, this year, we, we did a problem-solving meeting back in about April with the high school to prepare for this year and have actually began utilizing a different intervention program that's a little more tailored. Read 180's research is based in middle school. Uh, but Fusion is the program where, um, and it's really teaching strategies more than a program, but it's the, the, what we're using at the high school for those students who, who come to us, uh, clearly still needing some extra reading support, um, is that, is teaching those courses this year. Um, so those are, uh, those are the courses we would put those students in when they leave eighth grade, uh, when they go into the high school. And then there's also, um, students who we identify as, you know, not yet meeting that benchmark to move out of the reading strategies will be in those classes their sophomore or junior year as well.
So we don't have any data on Fusion yet, because we just started it?
Correct.
The reading strategy data wasn't good as far as moving them in the high school?
Yeah, not, it wasn't, we wouldn't move them, we wouldn't move them, we weren't moving them out quickly enough. You know, like, we weren't getting enough, higher enough percentage of them to, you know, I think that twelve-hundred Lexile score is kind of what I use as a base of once you're at that twelve-hundred score, uh, you can basically access most of the text that you're gonna run into, you know? So, um, even in college, you know, um, so we wanna make sure every kid gets to that kind of twelve hot, twelve-hundred Lexile. So we weren't getting kids to that, that, that bar. Enough of them are getting them quickly enough, and so we said, let's try something else.
What pool of money are we using for the, um, um, the program, just that specific one, to take a student from kind of novice that we know is going into novice in high school? What kind of pools of money are we using?
We are limited at the high school with pools of money because they don't get title funds. Um, and so we used, we picked Fusion, kind of a group effort mainly out of curriculum instruction money, just, um, ninety-one ninety is the new scope, um, but, so that doesn't mean a ton to you guys, but that means, uh...
I don't even know what that's...
Yeah.
So, so when we switch a software pack or, you know, a program like this, so we've been paying for a reading strategy from middle school and high school. Is that a license a year?
It was a one-time purchase, yeah, that was made six years ago, I believe.
Okay, so now upkeep with that, so we're...
There is an upkeep cost, it's not as much as the one, but there, no, there is an upkeep cost, yeah.
So now we're, um, kind of not gonna use reading strategies in high school, but we won't really, uh... We won't incur any savings because it wasn't costing as much a year, but we will have a new cost of Fusion.
Fusion's cost shouldn't be, um, it, the upfront, the, the startup cost is always the highest cost because you've gotta get the materials, uh, you've gotta get that upfront, that upfront training. There is some maintenance or additional trainings, but the upfront cost is the... Very much.
There's, there's typically, just switching from one program to another, there's typically not gonna be a cost savings.
Well, I, I'm assuming the new one's gonna be more expensive, but I didn't know if there's, there would be some decrease if there was a lot... I don't know, if there was a license, sometimes you have to pay a license every year for this piece of stuff.
A lot of software you do, yeah.
Well, and I do think that one of the really important things that you all do, and, and you highlight it when you come and do the data meeting, but one of the really important things you do is in looking at the data, you're basing your decisions on the data. You're basing it, are we having the effects that we want? And if not, can we look at something comparable or something different or try something new? Not just keep doing the same thing and paying the same fee and using the same program, especially whenever you're talking about, um, you know, kids that are really, are vulnerable kids that we need to get from the novice to, you know, moving up, um, with the, with the achievements. So I really do think, I, I really appreciate that about what you guys do. And I appreciate that it's based on data. It's not just, well, we decided we didn't like that or the kids won't like that or we were, you know, not thinking it was working. You look at the numbers, you see if it's doing what we needed to do, if it's not, make some changes. I, thank you.
We've got about ten minutes before we shut down and take a little break before the meeting starts, we gotta get some stuff ready. So if anybody, if any board members would like to ask a question about information we haven't gone over, I think it'd be helpful.
Well, I would like to start the summer reading, that's next right here.
Okay, all right.
How many kids attended each day?
So at this side, I didn't label, because I was afraid of identifying information. So the first two columns are average number of students who came in June and July. So that's seventeen kids and fifteen kids. This is the percentage race. So I didn't wanna put, label those because it could itemize.
That's the number of kids that came. So seventeen came to Huntertown and, on average, in Ju- June.
In June.
Fifteen in July. Sixty-two point nine percent of them were white, twenty percent of them were Hispanic, and seventeen point one percent of those students were African-American.
And did we track the total number of kids that came?
I have attendance rosters on every kid.
So how many different students came?
How many different students, sure, yeah.
Well, and how many of these kids were the twenty-five percent targeted?
All of the Tuesday, Thursday, so it's broken up, so the...
Okay.
Yeah.
And then you have their data, so I was a little confused by this. So the striving readers is the twenty-five percent?
Yeah, that's the Tuesday, Thursday.
So what is the difference between line three and line five?
There.
That's all... The rip change versus the percentile change, it's just a different data point. So the rich, the red change is that scale score.
For the summers, okay, okay, okay. And then, but no data for the kids who were not striving, striving readers?
For the Wednesday program?
Yeah. No data on the...
We can, we can, Martha could, here's the reason I don't have her count that. It takes a lot of time for one, which we would do if we thought it was gonna have a big, huge, significant outcome. I don't feel like we approached the Wednesday program with the idea that six times, most of them just come to four, you know, three to four sessions because due to vacations. I don't know if that's enough, what, I don't, like, what that, what that number would spit out would be a number that I don't know that we could say was there, you know what I'm saying? It'd be like, oh, well, that matters.
It is just that last year when we were discussing what and how much and what parts of this are funding, I really think that was a request that I made. So, but we're saying that, um, that's just not really measurable, is that the...
It's measurable, I would ask what it would tell you. So if we've...
It would tell me what impact those dollars had for those students.
So I would push back about it wouldn't be those dollars.
It's not necessarily focused on reading either, the, the Wednesday program.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I...
I'm sorry?
I didn't hear, no, I'm not sorry, but, I mean, I didn't, these objections when I asked for it last spring. I thought it was coming, so that's all I wanted to know.
Sure, you want the Wednesday data.
Well, um, I thought that we were going to go ahead and test the kids.
Sure, we did.
And do this exact same thing that we did for the striving readers.
Yeah, I, yeah.
But I think it's too late to go back and do it.
No, we did it, we have it.
I mean, I've got spreadsheets on everybody. I don't have their, uh, app scores, but, I mean, I'll send that.
And what's the average summer slide in the RIT?
So, so the average for all students is minus one point seven eight, and so...
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
All students. What do you expect to see?
Do you mean that, or is that...
That's what that, yeah, that is that number, all students.
That's all students, whether they went to summer reading or not?
Yes, that's all.
Oh, okay, I thought this was the data from, okay.
So you can compare the ones, the summer striving only went down point two where everybody went home.
Okay, that's what I, I thought this whole slide was just on the summer reading. Okay.
I'll tell you what this tells me over and over again, is that we need to go longer in the summer. That summer slide is bad.
Nope, and you can see that we have an effect on the kids that, that attend the program that...
Those summer striving, yeah.
Because those, and I always say, those are the students that traditionally in data have the largest slide.
Yeah.
Right, the students that are identified in our striving readers program.
Higher than the average, absolutely.
Much higher than the average, generally speaking. And they are, they are staying below the average they're having. I mean, point two is really barely statistically, I don't even know, I'd have to run the test on that, see if that evening is significant decline or really just...
So the goal here is to not have a decline, not really to have an increase?
It's the hold, yeah.
Um, okay, well, this'll be good to know. I mean, I don't know if we ever got the final costs on the Wednesday portion of this.
About fifty-seven thousand.
For Wednesday?
For Wednesday.
And what's the cost on the Tuesday, Thursday?
It's like a hundred and thirty-two.
That's less than.
And how many kids attended again? Do, that's in here.
Uh-huh.
Um, what was the total number, Martha?
I just have it by school. And that's where it gets hard because these are kids who attended fifty percent or more.
Sure, I just wondered how many total kids, yeah.
I'll have that to you by the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
One thirty-two, and what was the other one, Scott? Wednesday?
Fifty-seven, fifty-seven, seven.
And then how much were the books?
That's all in there, right? Is that, oh, no, that we sent home.
And that's included in that cost.
In the one thirty-two? Oh, okay, I thought that we had broken that out.
So the one thirty-two wasn't just for the Tuesday, Thursday, that also included books?
That is for the Tuesday, Thursday, which included the books that went home to kids.
But, but we also sent books home to every kid that been at school?
But the one thirty-two was just for the elementary Tuesday, Thursday program.
Okay, and so then the books that was in...
And what was the total cost when we sent the books home for all of the kids?
Middle and high, too?
Yeah.
I don't know what the cost would be.
Now we've got to break it down like that? Yeah.
I guess, too, as we look at the cost of this, like, you know, if we ramped up to targeting the bottom forty percent, you know, and tried to expand that, I don't, can't imagine that the cost would go exponentially like that because a lot of those are baked in and just, you know, more kids.
That's why, so that's why, yeah, which is an example why the Wednesday program number is, is, um... You know, the materials we use for Tuesday, Thursday are generally the materials we use for Wednesday. Well, they are the materials, there might need to be a few additional copies.
Oh, they're not specifically targeted for the kids who are having a more difficult time in the bottom twenty-five percent?
No, they are. So the Tuesday, no, they're, the Tuesday, Thursday program is based upon, is, is a program that is based upon summer reading for, uh, the exact purpose we're trying to solve, right? To prevent the summer slide, right? They're, they're books with lessons, um, and so those same lessons can, are used on that Wednesday program. So we don't have to rebuy the curricular material, like, or those lessons, we, we can use the lessons. There's, there's about thirty-six lessons. We don't have thirty-six sessions. And so we stagger the lessons so that they're, they don't repeat. But at the same time, if you were a Wednesday kid, not Tuesday, Thursday, it's not like that.
And so Northside had thirty-one students designated for the Tuesday, Thursday program, or that's just how many?
That's how many came.
Chose to come?
Yes.
Because I know a lot of people in Northside really liked it, you know?
Yeah.
Even if they weren't identified.
But the Tuesday, Thursday were...
Of the Tuesday, Thursday, we had a hundred and twelve kids come at least once. But across the district, that's the number that came, fifty percent or more.
Jimmy, Martha, thank you all very much. We've got about ten minutes. A certain motion by Ms. Bradley, second by Mr. Pringle, to adjourn this data meeting.
So seconded.
Okay, all the papers, so, hi. Folks, may I motion here? Thank you, thank you, Jimmy and Martha, thank you.